This is how we want to start the new year with technical difficulties.
This is a great.
I know it's never happened to you.
Well, generally, there's not hardly anyone online, so we would only be embarrassed in front of one or two people, right?
This is how we want to start the new year with technical difficulties.
Oh.
Is that?
Matt.
Oh.
I know it's never happened to you.
Well, generally, there's not hardly anyone online, so we would only be embarrassed in front of one or two people.
This is how we want to start the new year with technical difficulties.
Oh.
Is that?
Matt.
Oh.
I know it's never happened to you.
Well, generally, there's not hardly anyone online, so we would only be embarrassed in front of one or two people.
This is how we want to start the new year with technical difficulties.
Oh.
Is that?
Matt.
Oh.
I know it's never happened to you.
Well, generally, there's not hardly anyone online, so we would only be embarrassed in front of one or two people.
This is how we want to start the new year with technical difficulties.
Oh.
Is that?
Matt.
So we. We're good? We're on. Okay, we want to welcome everyone to Planning Commission Meeting, first one of the year, January tenth, twenty twenty-four. We'll go ahead and start. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission Member Rena and then a prayer moment of silence by myself, Commission Member Stimson.
Please arise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful that we could come together tonight as a planning commission and we are grateful for the people that are willing to serve on this, on this board and please help us as we make decisions for our community that we will have all the information that we need and be able to go forward and do what's best for our community. Please bless us as we start this new year that we will be able to see the needs of our community and the families that are here. Please bless this country that we live in and the military and the families that are affected by that, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we will go on to the minutes from December thirteenth. We have, Jeff, did you, did you look over the minutes?
What do you think?
I know you did.
I want, I sat down here so you guys could, your necks could turn in this direction for a change. I have one small change and that is on what would be item number three when we made a motion to approve with corrections that Jeff provided, so perhaps we could make it Commission Member Reed. And other than asking for a copy of our new schedule that we, because we changed it from last time, amended it, so other than that, that's all I have, Rob.
Did you get the changes, Robin, that he sent? Okay. Have you, but as long as you have them, we can do it with the proposed changes and a, and a, we would like a copy of the new schedule that we had.
I move to approve with the changes.
Is there a second?
If that's all anybody else.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Matt, are you online? We can't hear you if you are. Those opposed, say nay. Okay, so the motion passes. Are you able to see if Matt's on there, if he's? Okay. I guess I should have started by welcoming our new planning commission members. We're, we're a little discombobulated today. Technical difficulties and, and just shifting responsibilities a little bit. So we have two new. Go ahead, introduce yourself.
My name is Russ Galt. What do you want me to say? I've been here.
West Haven member? How long have you been in West Haven?
I've been here for about two years.
Okay, we are so excited to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dustin Hepworth. I've been a West Haven resident for seven years.
So, so we're excited to have two new members. With the weather tonight, we're thinking maybe Commission Member Roundy is, is stuck somewhere. We hope that she isn't. And Member Neese should be online, or was, he's not there now? Okay. Um, okay, the report. Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Neese says that the link in the pamphlet is not working or on the agenda, so he can't get on.
Is he able to get the PDF that was set out?
Yeah, might try that.
Okay, we'll have Robin send that to him.
I wonder if the link needs to be updated because and maybe this is just me, but last week I tried to jump onto the city council meeting via Zoom and it was, I sat there for forever waiting to get on, so I just watched the recording on YouTube. It's maybe the link in the packet needs to be updated.
I'm, I'm attempting it right now and it's not, it won't let you do any. Like Andrew says.
Are you using the agenda or the packet link? Is there one in both or just one?
It's the same one. It's the agenda on the packet.
Okay, well, let's move forward while Robin's trying to figure that out. Aleka, do you have actions taken by city council?
Yes, so on December twentieth, the subdivision ordinance was approved. And with the condition that they look at a copy of the application and the checklist, which they did get at a work session for the meeting on the third. And that's pretty much it.
Well, that was easy. Um, okay, does, and Amy doesn't have anything else for us, right?
No.
Okay. So we go to number five on the agenda. Are we able to table this one until Becky gets here, assuming that she's showing up, Aleka?
Um, well, we'll need to have a chairman. I mean, I, we can go on to six because it's just a discussion.
To the end? Okay, all right. Do we need to motion to the, push it to the end, or can we just push it to the end?
Well.
Can we appoint a temporary?
Right, yeah.
Table the rest of it until next time?
Um, well, I, I'm assuming she's going to be here tonight, so if we get to the end, like then we can, then we can vote on it at the end if she doesn't show up.
Yeah, table it till the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
But do, are you saying we need to have appointed to continue on going, or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it would need to be appointed.
Okay.
Okay.
At least a temporary chairman.
I, I know that I am running the meeting. Am I okay to nominate someone? Are we?
I think.
I should be able to, correct?
Sorry to clarify. Aleka, are you saying that we just need to appoint a temporary chairman and then we can do the chair and the vice chair at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Can I make a motion then to?
I'll entertain a motion.
Appoint Melinda as the temporary chair?
I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Oh, I forgot to say aye, aye. I'm not a nay. Um, okay, so temporary chairman will be myself, Melinda. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I, I misunderstood that.
I'm sorry, maybe I should also put in the motion to table it till the end of the meeting, the voting or selection?
Do we just move it and not table it?
Yeah.
Okay, great, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so noted. Just move the rest of that to the end of the meeting. Number six, discussion on planning policies and procedures.
Yeah, so we just put this item on the agenda to go over a few items from the policy and procedures, seeing that we have two new commission members. We are not going to go over every single thing on the policy and procedures, but just some of the main points, and if you guys have any questions, then maybe we can answer those before we have to vote on the next items on the agenda. So yeah, at the end of last week, you guys received an email with hopefully some helpful PDFs consisting of the policy and procedures, how to make motions and I believe, and a handbook. So as far as motions go, moving forward, I will start including at the end of my staff reports, sample motions of approval, denial, and approval with conditions, depending on what it is. You're free to read it word for word. You can amend it however you'd like, or you can choose not to use it at all. But I will be including those to kind of be helpful to you moving forward. And then for policy and procedures, so attendance, so if you're not going to be here, just make sure that you know, you notify us. You're allowed to miss up to three times. Being late because of worker traffic doesn't necessarily count against you. When you're on Zoom, we have to be able to identify you, so that could be having your camera on, that could be having your name or a picture. But you have to have your microphone on. You can't just be voting through Messenger or the message part of Zoom. For a quorum, we have to make sure we have at least four members. If they're, for whatever reason, there's not four people here, the chair has to call the meeting to order, announce that there's a lack of people here, and then adjourn the meeting. See, if there's a conflict of interest, make sure to state that and withdraw from participating. For public hearings, there needs to be a motion to, and a second, to enter and to leave public hearing, and moving forward for our agendas, I would like to have at the bottom, we didn't do it for this one, but moving forward, I would like to have the rules of public hearings at the bottom so that the public is aware. Basically know how it works. But once the public hearing is open, whoever wants to come up and speak will come to the podium, say their name and their address and make their comment. We do not respond to their comment or answer their questions until afterwards. We can discuss that. And maybe the chair, if they want to, they can go over those rules before this public hearing and those moving forward, but that's just a suggestion. As far as time limit goes, we don't have a set time limit, but if, let's say there was a huge line of people, for whatever reason, the chair can impose a certain time limit. I believe before it was about two minutes, but that's just dependent.
Is that written into our policies?
Yeah, so it's ordinance, let's see. Yeah, policy and procedures, yeah. We don't have a set time limit, but the chair may set one. That's pretty much it. I mean, is there anything that you wanted to clarify or?
As far as attending via Zoom, does that count as a meeting missed, or is that a meeting attended?
Attended, yeah. Yeah, as long as we can identify that it's you.
Any questions, guys? No? Okay, thanks, Aleka. That's nice to have those clarified. I know starting it was tough to try and decide, like you want to say something in public hearing and realize that that's not your time to talk. There's all those little things. I was like, wow, there's a lot to take in right now. So thanks for that. If there's no other questions, if that's it, we'll move on to item number seven. Discussion and action on final site plan. So final site plan for Triad Development located at approximately twenty fifty south, eleven hundred west. Applicant Nathan Messerly. Nathan, are you here? Oh, hi.
Hello.
Why don't you come up and tell us what's going on? State your name.
Uh, Nathan Messerly with Triad Land Development. Yeah, looking for final site plan approval on our Starbucks located, located on approximately twenty fifty south, just right next to the McDonald's. I'll just say, I want to be where Matt is right now. This gray neighborhood looks magical, so. But yeah, we've I think satisfied all of the, the requests for fi- uh, final site plan approval. We have all of our will serve letters from Weber Fire, Central Weber, Bonavista. Bonavista will be the secondary provider as well. We had to go through an approval process because there is no secondary on that street. And we are just in the final stretch, ready to get our building permit and get going after this weather calms down a little bit, so.
No more snow squalls to stop you?
Yeah, no more squalls, hopefully, but yeah, Starbucks is very excited about this site. They're excited to come in. Hopefully you've seen the renderings. They looked really nice. This will be a drive-through only. It's a very interesting, unique shape of property that they've been able to, I think, utilize in a very good way. We've spoke with our neighbors, the McDonald's owners, as well as the, the real estate folks there, and they're excited about that development and we do have a shared access easement with McDonald's, so everything's going smooth.
I don't know, did we get the renderings on this one, or was it, did we get them last time? I don't, I didn't see them in this packet. Aleka, do you know?
Um, it should have been in your packet. Was it not included at all?
We've got the, the diagrams, you know, like the.
Site plans and detector.
But I don't see the renderings.
They're in the link that I provided. It's just under the architectural drawings, so.
Yeah, yeah. No way, I have them.
Maybe they're here and I'm not seeing them.
Yeah, I don't see them either.
See them the last time he was here?
I don't remember.
I can't recall either.
What is your projected completion date?
Uh, good question. It's a pretty small building, so it's about eleven hundred square feet is all. Those can go up pretty quick, but we're hoping that we deliver the, the building to Starbucks in the early fall timeframe. They actually have to go through, we're, we're basically, if you're familiar, we're just giving them a warm core and shell. Starbucks comes in and they put all of their equipment in. You know, all of the interiors they do, so we just provide them with the shell. I'm not sure how long it'll take them to complete, but once the building's handed over to them, it's in their best interest to get it up and running so they can actually serve customers as soon as possible, but we don't have exact timelines on when they will complete, but you know, there's also construction hurdles. You know, I don't know if you're familiar, but right now, a lot of the electrical equipment, the meter base panels and switchgear is backed up. And so we have a lot of that stuff on order and we're hoping we don't have to be creative with generators or something when we pass over the building to them, so. Tough question to answer, but we want it built as soon as possible, so.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay. Aleka, everything looks good on your end?
Uh, yeah, everything looks good. The only thing I would say is, and we've had communication about this, is the signs. I mean, regardless, they would have to fill out a building permit and I would have to make sure it complies with their code. If they're wanting to have more than one sign, and that's excluding wall signs. So if they wanted to have like a pole sign and a monument sign, they would need to have a plan that they would present back to Planning Commission for that specifically. But if they're only choosing to have one or the other, then they would just do a building permit and I'll, I'll get to review that as well. They won't get approval until I make sure that they comply with city code on whatever the sign is. But other than that, they've given, they got preliminary approval, so we know that they complied with the design review, the landscaping, the elevations, the materials, the percentages, and parking, all of that. Will serve, I got, uh, they got approval from engineering and they have fire approval, so they're good to go.
Okay, well, if no one has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the final site plan for Triad Development located at approximately twenty fifty south, eleven hundred west. Parcel number one five two six eight zero 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 two, applicant Nathan Messerly, if I got that right.
Yeah.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the final site plan for Triad Land Development located at approximately twenty fifty south, eleven hundred west. Parcel one five two six eight zero zero two. Point seven nine acres in total. Those of you in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So is, is he good to go now? Aleka doesn't have to go on to, to city council, correct?
No, he doesn't. He's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
We look forward to another Starbucks. Becky? Okay. Can you, do you, are you contacted with Matt? Jeff, will you ask him to share the link with Becky?
His question is, can you hear me?
We cannot.
Are you there, Matt? I'm getting little dots in the text.
Pending.
Can you?
Can you?
Andrew.
Do you, are you contacted with Matt? Jeff, will you ask him to share the link with Becky?
His question is, can you hear me?
We cannot.
Are you there, Matt?
It's looping again.
Can I share the link? I don't have a link.
Oh, ask, ask Matt to share the link.
Oh, okay. This is the strangest meeting I've ever been to.
We've got technical difficulties. I don't know what's going on. Oh, she doesn't? Okay, well, then I feel better. Um, all right, let's move on to item number nine, public hearing.
Can Matt hear us? You want, if you can hear us, Matt, can you nod your head? Okay.
Are we skipping item number eight?
I can see his reflection in the.
Oh, he's up there.
Now, our screens are not working. We can't see you. We can't hear anything.
He's up there.
Okay.
Can you hear us, Matt?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Matt, or Amy, is he able to give his vote with a thumbs up or a head nod on there?
I believe. I believe that they, um, I don't know. Well, I see that because they talked about at one point that if you didn't have the video on, that you should be able to hear the voice and not just be able to do thumbs up or, or like type it in.
Yeah.
But, um.
Or we can see him, maybe that's.
I mean, where you can see it and it's gonna, and it's recorded. I think that being able to have that kind of indication and say, you know, does that thumbs up mean yes, and have him, you know, confirm too, I think we would be okay by doing that.
Okay. All right, Matt, we can see your reflection on the window, so we're going to look for a thumbs up when we get to a vote. If you have a question or a comment, maybe put it in the screen and someone can tell us, because we still can't see the comments on the screen either, so someone, Robin, can you get us? Yep, Robin's got a thumbs up, so I don't know if you can see that, but yes, so if you have a comment, please type it in your chat. Um, so we'll move to number nine on the agenda, public hearing.
Do we need to go to item number eight?
Yes, we do.
Oh, did I skip eight?
Yeah, it's another final site plan.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I did skip right over. I just marked it off. Thank you for catching that. Okay, um, number eight, discussion action on final site plan for Southern Tire Mart at Pilot located at eleven seventy-two west, twenty-first street. Uh, applicant Travel Center Realty, Perry Phillips, agent Kim Lehorn, and associate Justin Sidwell. Is anyone here or online?
If they are online, well.
I bet they don't have the right link.
So that's the other question, if, I guess, Matt, can you type in the link into the chat that you used, like the, the number? What is it? The meeting ID or whatever it is? Because we might have an issue where the.
Yeah, Becky and Matt neither could get on from the link on the agenda.
And I hate to open a can of worms, but if that's the case, then do we, can we still proceed with the meeting? But.
That's a good point.
In the lobby of the Zoom meeting, Robin, do you have like a different? Maybe we can. The Sidwell?
There is a time zone difference, so.
Well, with Matt. So the, the gentleman from the, the Tire Mart, Mart is in the lobby, but he's in the wrong lobby.
We need to get him, the, it's, the link from city council last week, I guess, is the link that we're on right now.
Yeah, so, hold on. We're going to try to.
But Andrew does have a good point. If we have sent out the wrong link, are we okay to proceed with the wrong link?
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, because we've advertised the, that the meeting is here.
Okay.
I mean, the biggest issue is whether or not there's people that are like.
Waiting in the other lobby.
In the other lobby, but we don't know how to.
Yeah.
I can't like really.
My, my only concern with that is, is that if the person from Tire Mart has to contribute any information, he's not going to be able to because.
Well, we're emailing him right now. He emailed and said, he's in the, you know, he's in the other lobby, so Aleka's in the middle of emailing him to get him into the right.
But we're, we're not able to communicate with Matt in the right one because the audio's off. So how would the Tire Mart guy be able to communicate with us if Matt can't communicate with us?
I'll see if it's not.
If we're texting him, can someone put him on a voice call?
Worried about the loop.
And let him testify via voice call?
I'm emailing him.
But the, but, email him and, and ask if he'll give you the phone number and then we.
And we can put him on speaker.
Get on the council one at all?
Well, but if he can't.
I do think speaker would be better, just a phone call, if he's tried to get in to the lobby, or if he's trying to get into the, if he can get into the right one and then we can get him on speaker on a phone call also. I don't know if he can get on one on his computer and then call in for audio. Because I'm sure he does not want to be tabled after waiting this long to get in front of the planning commission. Are we okay maybe to go forward, or do we want to wait?
So the, the issue. I mean, it, we could have the public hearing for the Westwood subdivision master development agreement amendment while we're in the middle of trying to do this.
Is there anybody else in the council lobby link?
Yeah, should have to end this one to get into that one.
Because how can we do a public hearing if we don't know we have public out there? Do you want to send this to Becky? Sorry.
To who?
She emailed everybody.
Bring it up.
Oh, hold on. You know what?
I think she did.
People are starting to come through. Are they?
Oh, maybe.
Two.
Until her, it's last week's or city, city council link, right?
Yeah.
I'd apologize to the public, but they're not here.
Justin, can you hear us? Okay, tell her to type in this number.
Yeah, in, in the Zoom link.
Okay.
We can't hear him.
Oh, I sent it to Robin.
Becky, type this number into your Zoom link and you'll be able to log in. Matt says he can hear you, but we can't.
Yeah.
I wonder about logging in on here. Well, after he left, I can't really ask my question, but I was wondering if we can do a Zoom with Matt on my phone or a, uh. Yeah, I just hate to go on because we don't have anyone here and if there's a comment and we're not hearing anyone. I don't think that we can even.
Yeah, we can't. Let's see if we can figure out the voice.
Okay.
See if Dustin can.
Hello?
Oh, we hear you.
We got.
Uh-oh.
We've got audio.
How about me? Can you hear me too? Got it. Perfect.
All right, is that Justin Sidwell?
Yes, I am here. Made it on.
Okay, Justin, we can hear you. Um. Why don't you go ahead and just state your name and tell us about your final site plan?
Hmm, yeah, so, uh, you got Justin Sidwell here. I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Um, we're representing, uh, Travel Center Realty, um, and this is for the Southern Tire Mart at Pilot Project. Um, so you all may have seen the site plan, um, but this is going in over at that Travel Center at one one seven two West Twenty First Street. Um, we've been working with Ed and Alaka pretty closely on this one, um, on some circulation, um, and then we've also been with, uh, Weaver County and then Bonavista Water on, um, water service to the site. We've got approvals on both those ends. Um, so we've got that final site plan here for you, um, along with some turn movements that we had submitted to Ed. I'm not sure if those were on the agenda as well, um, but those have been reviewed and approved by Ed. Um, so after this process, um, you know, we're looking forward to getting into development. We've got our, uh, architects and NEP who have put together a building package that they're ready to submit as well as some revised signage based on comments by Alaka. Um, so they're ready to move on that front and, uh, on the civil front, we're also looking forward to getting that, uh, final site plan approval if possible tonight.
Okay, um, any questions for Justin?
I've got one. During the, the course of construction, i- how do you see this affecting the, the heavy equipment traffic as far as the eighteen-wheelers and stuff coming in and out, out of there?
Uh, as far as within the pilot side itself.
Well, just with the semis that are, that normally frequent that parking lot, is there gonna be measures to kinda to limit the, the effect on them?
Yes, absolutely. So this project is a joint venture between our client, um, Southern Tire Mart and, um, Pilot Flying J. Um, and so Pilot really values, of course, the circulation within their lot, um, so this construction is, uh, carefully planned out between our client, um, and Pilot Management and Ownership, just to ensure that their customers, uh, you know, have a great visit when they're there, um, they don't want to disturb anything. They want to disturb minimal parking spaces and traffic aisles. Um, so that is something that's heavily considered and, um, is definitely enforced by Pilot itself, so they don't lose any customers.
Okay. Um, Alaka, do you have any information on this that we need to know?
Um, nope, they've complied with everything in preliminary, um, they've been, like he's mentioned, he's been working with our engineer um, with the site circulation, um, he's provided the necessary will serve letters and has gotten fire approval.
That looks like that was all in the packet. We've got the.
Yeah.
The exterior in there also. That looks nice. Um. All right, if no one has any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the final site plan for Triad Land Development located at approximately.
We already did that.
Oh, I think it's wrong in the packet. That's, it's wrong. You're probably reading in the right spot.
Agenda.
Okay. I motion to approve the final site plan for Southern Tire Mart at Pilot located eleven seventy-two West Twenty First Street, parcel number one five five nine six zero 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 one, applicant Travel Center Re- Realty LLC, Perry Phillips, Agent Kim Lee Horn and Associates.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve a final site plan for Southern Tire Mart at Pilot located at eleven seventy-two West Twenty First Street, parcel one five five nine six zero 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 one, applicant Travel Center Realty LLC, Perry Phillips, Agent Kim Lee Horn and Associates. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm an aye. I keep forgetting to vote. Okay, the motion passes and they are, Justin, you're good to go also, correct, Alaka?
Yes.
Any information that he needs from you?
Nope, they're good to go.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you all.
All right, let's move on to number, item number nine on the agenda, public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we go into a public hearing, uh, to review the First Amendment to the Westwood Subdivision Master Development Agreement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to go into public hea- hearing for the First Amendment to the Westwood Subdivision Master Development Agreement. All of those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion is approved, motion passes, um, we will enter in public hearing. Anyone online or in the building that would like to make a comment, please come up. Or raise your hand in the chat room or maybe even text us. I don't know. A- Amy, this is where I was a little concerned. What, do you have any thoughts on this?
So, um, well, first of all, which part are you concerned about? Sorry, are you concerned about?
That we're, that we're on a different link, even though it's a public hearing. I just think about the weather tonight, how bad it is, like, did people stay home and plan on zooming in? I, that, that's it. That's my only concern.
So which link are we on? Um, Robin?
We're on this, I'm on the city coun- I'm on the city council link is what, I use last wink, link, last week's link if you get logged in.
So.
From the city council.
The link that is on the agenda is not working?
It is incorrect.
I'm sure it could be working, but everybody switched over.
If everybody jumped over to it, yeah, it might be working, but right now we're, we started on this one.
Well, okay, here's, here's my suggestion, um. The petitioner is not here, um, so that's a, a problem in and of itself. I would suggest, um, you table both the public hearing and ask to have it re-noticed up for next meeting and that you table the, um, discussion and action item and, um, we address that one also next meeting.
Can we do those? Do we need to do those in two separate motions?
I would, please.
Okay.
We have to exit this.
Okay, yep, I will entertain a motion.
Somebody needs to make a motion to exit the public hearing.
I move to, uh, exit the public hearing on the First Amendment to the Westwood Subdivision Master Development Agreement.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to leave public hearing on the First Amendment to the Westwood Subdivision Master Development Agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing.
So.
So.
I just had a, another thought. Um, we actually, you actually would not have to have another public hearing if you did not want to. It was noticed that one. People could have, could have attended. They're not here. Um, so, but if, you know, but it really is kind of personal preference. If you wanted to notice it up again because of the link, you could do that, but frankly, I think that, um, it was our obligation because we did notice we, it's on the public, no, it's on the public web. On the Utah Public Website. And it's, um, and that has been noticed up, so even though it has, does not have the correct link, um, you know, for the Zoom. You could, but this is up to you, the, because we could notice it back up again if you wanted to just make sure.
You know, I believe with the technical nature of this being, um, really just a, a technical fix, I, I don't feel bad about not having the public, more public notice because I, I don't think we're really changing anything. I think we're more clarifying some things. If we were really making some significant changes, I would feel like we needed to do the public hearing, but I don't think this really changes anything. It just clarifies it.
That was my, my thought as well with how it's not, you're not changing much, you're just exactly like I said, clarifying what those setbacks are because it wasn't super clear in the original MDA, so.
Okay.
And it's compliant with whatever the ordinance are for those zones, so. I feel like we could, I mean, the only other thing is, do we want to make sure they're here for their action or not is the other.
And that is completely up to the, to the commission.
Okay.
Um, again, it's a technical thing. You could vote on it, um, staff has reviewed those, um, those changes that are requested. Well, it's not really changes, it's additions, um, because they didn't get put into the MDA to begin with. Don't know why, um, but as some of you have been through some of these MDAs, there's just details that have not been put in, um, that would not happen today, but, um, staff has reviewed it. Don't see any, you know, they're comparable to lots, lot sizes elsewhere in the city and so really, you know, moving it on to, um, city council.
Council.
That's very much up to you guys.
Let's move on to item number ten then. Um, and if you guys read in your packet, if you read that, there's all the information, the background, the analysis and the suggested motion.
Quickly, don't we have to actually tape, make a motion to table that? Then, or actually, or what are we making a motion on, anything on that one?
Um, we have moved on past number nine. We entered and left public hearing and so we've moved on to number ten, a discussion and action on public hearing. So that is where we're at right now, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to any discussion that you guys have on what you want to do with, with the Westwood Subdivision Master Development.
The representative has been in contact with us and all that stuff. You've been working with them, right, Alaka? Are they aware of these modifications, I guess is my concern.
They're the ones who wrote the, uh, First Amendment, um, and submitted it to me. I've reviewed it, um, legally and then Alaka reviewed it for the, um, for the setbacks and stuff, so yes, they've, they've been in constant contact.
I'm good with that then.
Question I have is about the actual design of the neighborhood. I- i- is it appropriate for me to bring up those questions now or is this not right time?
We are in the discussion period, so go ahead.
Um, my only question is, is where this is at a crossroads of, is it, is this at the crossroads of thirty-five hundred West and thirty-three hundred South? Or is those just bearings that this is not actually bordering those two roads? I couldn't get it, uh, when I was looking on the general plan, I couldn't get it for sure.
It's actually just to the north of thirty-five hundred, near the power lines, over there.
So the main thoroughfare, the future road, the curved road that comes through here, that doesn't actually join into any existing roads? Or does it?
I might have misspoke. I think it's si- thirty-six hundred that goes across there.
It sits north of thirty-six hundred, but.
Six hundred.
The, the road that's the future planned road on the general map ties into thirty-five hundred West here.
Yeah.
And so m- my only question is, is, is this gonna then turn into one of the inlets to this neighborhood? Or are we just using the one inlet? Or the two inlets, one off of thirty-six hundred and one off of thirty-five hundred?
I mean, I hate to be. It doesn't matter.
Okay. No, and that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, the, the thing is, the MDA, yeah, the MDA is already gone through.
That would have been something to do before the MDA.
Yes.
So we're just making sure that the MDA is brought up to the standards that the city's gonna require as far as setbacks, lot sizes, et cetera.
Well, because it, the thing is, the MDA never addressed the setbacks and that's what the problem is, is that they want to now be able to build. They can't build without those setbacks being put into place.
Okay, understandable.
So, yeah, I, I didn't know quite how to.
No, you're fine, you're fine. That's perfectly fine. Yeah.
Any other discussion? You guys have any questions? Um, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the, to city council for the First Amendment to the Westwood Subdivision Master Development Agreement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to recommend approval to city council for the First Amendment to the Westwood Subdivision Master Development Agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. That goes on to city council and you guys will just get hold of them. Alaka, is that the plan?
Yes, we will.
Okay, and they'll, and they'll just be on the next agenda, that's still, is that?
For city council, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's move on to item eleven, discussion and action on time change for next planning commission meeting. Um. Tell me about this.
It's just for the work session.
Either way, uh, well. Either way.
Um, the, we have a draft of the general, um, plan amendment and they're supposed to be bringing it to the, to you guys. I'll be sending out, um, that draft to, well, I'll send it to you, Robin, if you'll send it to, to all of them to review. It's about a hundred pages at least.
Oh, wow.
Plenty of fun things for you to look at, Jeff, to review the grammar.
Yeah, thanks.
But, um, we're also having the, uh, we're inviting the city council to this meeting too, so that, and, um, Mike Hanson will be here to talk through, um, you know, talk through the, the plan. There's gonna be, there's issues in there, um, some policy issues that you guys are gonna need to discuss, you know, talk through as to what you want to see in there. Um, this is just one meeting that versus, I mean, there's gonna be, you know, a couple of meetings and you and then you'll have to decide when you want to have the, um, public hearing on it. Um, but Mike will be here to talk through the, start talking through those issues of just, well, the, the general plan amendment.
Okay.
So that's why we were asking to have it started at five, just because we figure you'll have a lot of questions. It's a hundred, I can't remember exactly, but it's about a hundred-page document.
Are we gonna hold that in the other room? Are we gonna be in here?
No, you'd need to.
Oh, we'll be here.
You'd be here.
Okay.
That's not a workshop?
No. Because then we'd have the, um, we'd also have the whatever other business, yeah, that you'd have.
Okay, so we just need a motion on this one?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, to change the planning commission meeting for January twenty twen- January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four only to begin at five PM.
I move that.
So moved.
Since you already read it.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to change the planning commission meeting for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four only to begin at five PM. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, so we are gonna go back and return to item number five on the agenda, two appointments. Um, we need to appoint a chairman and a vice chairman and Amy, am I good to appoint someone? To nominate someone?
You can nominate somebody.
Okay, I mean, not appoint, I guess nominate.
You, you can nominate somebody.
Um, I, I, um, would like to.
Can we, can we nominate somebody that's not here to defend themselves?
Um, yes, you can do that, um, and the other option is also you could possibly, um, table it for next meeting, but because we have that other thing going on, you probably don't want to do that, so, um, but yeah.
Can I discuss first right now before I, before, okay? Um, my thoughts were that, um, we would appoint Andrew or Becky to chairman. Um. Both having experience, um, I've been here long enough to understand how the meeting runs, uh, businesses and all the information that goes with approving everything on the planning commission. Um, I would.
Jeff and Matt have been here a decent amount of time too, so.
Yes, yes, they have. Um, I, I would like Andrew's input about what he would be willing to do. And did Becky ever get on? Is she here? I can't, she didn't get on, okay.
Um, I mean, I'm happy to not have them need to make another plaque for me.
Well, that's a great reason.
Seems to not be a problem.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, to serve in whatever capacity the commission would like. I'm not gonna. the commission would like. I'm not gonna, uh, I would never recommend myself as a chair or, and I would never fight for the position per se. But if, if that's something that the commission wants, I'm happy to fill that role. And I know that there are issues sometimes in the getting here right on times for the meetings. I usually jump on zoom on my phone on the way in, but, I can make a commitment to be here on time during those, for those meetings, so. I feel bad nominating Becky without her here to kind of battle herself out.
Speaking of which, does anybody know whether or not she's interested?
Well, I.
Talk to her.
I did talk to her at the last meeting and she was willing, she was willing to do it. Was she, I think her and Andrew are about nose to nose and, and like, they would both be willing to do it.
Right.
They're not dying to do it.
Is anybody dying to do it?
Yeah, so where they both have the most information and experience, I feel like that, that's, that's a good fit for the planning commission to have either one of those. Take that spot, so.
What does, what does, yeah, what does Hawaii think?
Uh, I kind of go along with the idea of suggesting Becky for this one. And, yeah, and yeah, I, I kind of for my own case, I would kind of, I'm sure the same problems with Andrew. I kind of have a work thing once in a while and I think everybody knows my fluidity with that coming up. But yeah, I, I also would suggest Becky. If I had to pick a vice chairman right now, I'd pick, my personal opinion, I think he's got the, the wherewithal and just the attitude to go with it.
What did he say? I, I heard him say Becky, but.
He said that he wants you to be the vice chairman or he'd recommend you to be the vice chairman.
Not feeling that one very much.
Well.
Technically, you asked. When you asked for.
So, so what we can do here is I can, I can entertain a motion and you can nominate someone and we can vote. And if we don't get a yay, we don't get four, I need, think we need at least four to pass. Is that correct? Five, one, two, three, oh, because we've got, we need five.
I need five, four. You want one motion for all or do you want a separate motion for each one?
We'll do a separate motion for each one, so we'll do the chairman first, so.
Alright, well, I'll tackle it. I don't want Andrew to have to change his plaque. It seems important to him. So I would nominate Becky for chair.
Second.
I have a nomination for Becky Roundy to be chairman of the planning commission and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Well, Becky, I hope you're enjoying California. Maybe she'll get the notes on this. Could someone please text her? Alright, let's go to the vice chairman.
Like to make a motion on that?
Matt, go ahead.
I make a motion to select Jeff Reed as vice chairman.
There's no second.
Is there a second?
I guess my question is, can, can people withdraw themselves from that or is it just kind of a, like, are they forced into it if they?
Yeah, if they don't get a sec, if he doesn't get a second, then it would die for lack of, the motion would die for lack of second.
Okay, without a second, the motion dies. I'll entertain another motion. I, I will go ahead and nominate Andrew as the vice chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Andrew Raina will be vice chairman. We already did temporary, which was myself. Which was great because now I've voted myself out of a job, so. So let's go on to item number twelve on the agenda.
Oh, do you have, sorry, I have one thing.
Oh, go ahead.
Would it be beneficial for us to have a few work sessions for the new member, like go back to having our work sessions at five for the new members? For the next month or two, just so, I think it's helpful, especially as a new member to, to be able to, like, we get the reports and everything from Alaka, but to go over those maybe in some detail, go over questions. They might have any other sorts of questions, just to kind of see why we're doing things and such.
It really kind of depends on what's on the agenda, you know.
Yeah.
I anticipate and I'm sure that Alaka would probably think this too, that there's probably going to be work session or two just on the general plan stuff.
Okay.
I mean, it's such a big document that I, and the only reason why we're not doing a work session this time is just, you know, presenting. Here's the, the, the first draft, but I can see you guys having to, you know, go through. I mean, is that pretty accurate, what you're thinking, Alaka?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that something that we can decide on, that you guys can decide on as staff as you look at the agenda? That if it looks like it's a large agenda, that you would just let us know ahead of time that we need a, a work session maybe to discuss that with new planning commission members?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
No, I keep interrupting you. I'm sorry.
Oh, you moved to the other end and then you just started interrupting me. I see how this is.
The policy, I think the policy says it's up to the chair. So probably would be based upon what Alaka has on the agenda.
Okay.
And we'll let you know when you guys get the, the agenda, if there's going to be a work session or not. But I would imagine probably for the next couple of months, I would say, you probably would have it. But you'll get notified.
Yeah, and again, really it is, I think, I know that when I started, the work sessions were beneficial for me, even though we had a packet and a few things. We didn't have the full report like we do now. But again, like, even half an hour early just to discuss things before the meeting actually starts.
Absolutely.
Comes quickly.
Yeah, maybe answer any questions that you guys might have too, like how procedural questions. So, and that, and the staff review has made everything just so much easier, like so much clearer. But that's been really nice.
And kudos to all involved in putting together these packets of information for the new members, because I think it's just great.
And Becky just texted Amy saying that she's okay with it.
Alright.
So.
We have a new chair.
Thanks, Becky. Um, okay, let's move on to item number twelve.
Get it, Russ.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Thank you.
No problem.
Are you in California or Hawaii?
I'm in Hawaii. You can't tell where I'm at?
That's what I thought. Somebody said California. I don't know.
Becky's in California.
Matt, you were gone on our, potentially last week to discuss the Cowboys, but you know.
I've got another shot at that, don't worry.
I don't think so, Andrew. Okay, thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.